All right, good evening. Welcome to the special session, closed session portion of the City Council meeting. This meeting will be held in accordance with Executive Order N 29-20 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom meeting information and call-in information was posted on the agenda and on the city's website. Remote public comment is also available by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us. The city clerk will read your comments into the record during the public comment period. Again, welcome to the special session of City Council. We have a couple of closed session items, but this time, do we need a roll call or can we just let the record reflect that? Well, we probably do because we're missing someone. So can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember Dorofat is absent. Vice Mayor Rhino here. Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Mayor Viera.
Here.
Okay, with that, I will open up to the public to see if there was any of the members that would like to speak on the closed session items. They seeing none, we will move to closed session, and if there anything, if anything transpires that we need to report after, we will do that before going into open session. So thank you. Good evening and welcome back. The council has just come out of closed session, and there's nothing to report this evening.
November 23rd, 2020. This issue will be held in accordance with Executive Order N 29-20 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom meeting information and call-in information was posted on the agenda and on the city's website. Remote public comment is also available by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us. The city clerk will read your comments into the record during the public comment period. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember DeRocet is absent. Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Jim Stockle from the Harvest Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Happy Halloween, happy week of Thanksgiving. So let's pray. God, on this week of Thanksgiving, we have much to be thankful for. We are thankful for family and friends and coworkers for your provision. We thank you for our elected officials, for those who have served and are moving on to serve in other capacities, for those who will continue to serve, for those who will begin to serve. Bless them all with patience and wisdom, courage, and good cheer. We pray that you would continue to bless our beloved city and guide this meeting tonight. And we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for its stand, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Moving on to presentations, we have three this evening. The first is a proclamation honoring Jim DiMartini, Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors. First, I would like to read this proclamation. In honor of Jim DiMartini, Stanislaus County Board of Supervisor, District 5, whereas Supervisor DiMartini has tirelessly dedicated 16 years of service as a member of the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, and whereas Supervisor DiMartini attended many of the Series General Plan Update meetings over the course of two years, Supervisor DiMartini has been a longtime member of the Series Chamber of Commerce and has served on the Series Stanislaus County Redevelopment Agency, now known as the City of Series Successor Agency, and the Stanislaus Countywide Successor Agency Oversight Board. Supervisor DiMartini was instrumental in working with the Monterey Track Park Community Services District and the City of Series to bring municipal water to residents within the Monterey Track Park. Whereas Mr. DiMartini has diligently served on the Stanislaus County Airport Advisory Committee, the Agricultural Advisory Board, an alternate on the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, Board of Directors, excuse me, the CSAC Board of Directors, Central Valley, or excuse me, Central San Joaquin Valley Foreign Trade Zone Advisory Board, the Economic Development Action Committee, the Emergency Medical Services Board of Directors, Stanislaus County General Plan Update Committee, the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, Stanislaus County Employees Retirement Association, STAN-CERA, the San Joaquin Valley Supervisors Board of Directors, and the San Joaquin Valley Supervisors Endangered Species Committee, and one more here, and the Stanislaus County Disaster Council. Boy, Supervisor DiMartini, I'm not sure how you had much time for home life with all of these assignments, but now therefore be it resolved that I, Chris Viera, Mayor of the City of Series, along with the Series City Council, do hereby recognize and acknowledge and extend our heartfelt appreciation to Supervisor Jim DiMartini for his many contributions to the City of Series and its residents over the years, and offers best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. Thank you for your service proclaimed this ninth day of November, what it was said ninth day of November 2020. For those of you in the audience, we had to continue this item because we had some technical difficulties. So Jim, I want to present you with this proclamation. Also, I do have a plaque here from the City of Series. I would like to read this to you as well. It says, "In heartfelt appreciation to Jim DiMartini for dedicated public service as Board of Supervisor, District 5, Stanislaus County, January 2005 to December 2020, presented again this ninth day of November 2020, City of Series, California, the mayor and the city council of City of Series, together we achieve." Jim, thank you. Before I come down and give these to you, I wanted to, you know, thank you for your years of service, and it was an honor to serve with you. You were at almost every one of our council meetings, which is pretty much unheard of for a Board of Supervisor to do. You were always there to take our calls. You were always someone that, you know, had our back and was at the forefront for the things that were important to the city. So I can't thank you enough, not only as my friend, but as a, you know, a public servant that gave 110%. I don't know anyone that's a harder worker than you. So I'm sure you have many, you know, many things planned in the future, and I'm sure while California is losing a great person, Nevada's getting an exceptional person. So thank you from me. And at this point, I don't know if there's any other council members that wanted to comment. Okay, council member?
You know Supervisor DiMartini, there's a lot of things that over the last couple of, you know, eight years that I've got to known and talked to you. You know, I don't believe there's anybody that's done more for their district and how you've been a champion for the City of Patterson, City of Newman. You know, we've had a few conversations, and there's things that are going to be taking place after your term is up. The sidewalks in the South Modesto area, the infrastructure that is going to go in and take place, the things that the Board of Supervisors have already started to implement, but it will be, you know, come to fruition in the next couple of years. You know, you have always had the best interest of your constituents in place. So, you know, it's just a shame that you won't be around to see those things take place. But I know that the City of Patterson and the City of Newman, for the things that you've done out there for them, they're very appreciative of everything you've done. For the City of Series, you know, your presence and getting to talk to you for me on STAN-COG and, you know, on the Transportation Board, it's been very insightful. So Supervisor DiMartini, you did a fantastic job, and I wish you well in wherever it takes you.
I would like to echo what my colleagues have said, that I've been watching city politics for about 40 years now, and in all that time, I have never seen such a dedicated supervisor as you. I cannot think of any previous supervisor who came to all of our meetings the way you have, and that I truly believe that you watched out for the citizens of our city, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Supervisor, I just want to thank you for your years of service and dedication to the county and also to our city. It's been an honor to work alongside of you, and I wish you and your family all the best.
Thank you. I don't know if there was anyone in the audience that would like to say anything. At least I don't know if you, no, okay. With that, Jim, I do want to provide this to you, and then if you would like to say some words here.
Mayor and council members, thank you for all those nice words. I really appreciate that. I, this job's always meant a lot to me. It's why I was, you know, it's put in the time that I did. And I always felt that, you know, to represent the area, you can't do it from just sitting in your office there in Modesto. You got to get out into the district, and you have to have a relationship with everybody. So, I mean, everybody from the Hills Ferry Cemetery District to Monterey Park Track, all the three cities, I've made an effort to go to their meetings no less than once a year. And so I was always out, and I did the best I could out there. I've enjoyed the 16 years. It's went by fast. I feel like I was getting tired just reading all those committee assignments I had. I was like, wow, remember each one of those committees. I think if you had taken all these staff reports for 16 years, I think they'd reach halfway to the moon if you stacked them all up. But there's a tremendous amount of reading in this job, but you have to, you know, understand what you're doing, so you got to read everything. And I've enjoyed your council meetings, and sometimes I have some comments to make, sometimes I don't. But I also go to virtually every meeting from Patterson, Newman, too. I covered the district, and I appreciate your kind words. It's been nice serving you, and I'm going to kind of move on, do just a little bit less in the years to come, or fool around, some antique cars. And my goal is to build a new model railroad set, which is, it sounds like something easy to do, but believe me, it's not. So that'll occupy a lot of my time, especially during the winter. But thanks again for your kind words. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I hope you chance the new supervisor of the area well. It's, it's an interesting job, but you got to get out there and apply yourself, which I'm sure you will. Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next, we have a presentation honoring council members Brett Drosset and Mike Klein. I've got a couple of plaques here. I would like to read those from the City of Series. This, the first one is for Councilmember Drosset, "In heartfelt appreciation to Brett Drosset for dedicated public service as Series City Council Member from 2008 to 2020, presented this 23rd day of November 2020, City of Series, Series City Council, together we achieve." There's also a acknowledgement from Congressman Harder's office. I won't read that, but we'll make sure that Councilmember Drosset gets that. I don't know if there were any members of the council that would like to comment. I mean, I would like to thank Councilmember Drosset for his years of service. You know, there's been a lot that we've been able to accomplish, and he was always brought that, you know, coach mentality, or, you know, through the years, those of us that have sitting up here, there's always been a different makeup of this board. And the one thing that he did, which he kind of embodied, was, you know, bringing the rallyingness of, you know, the public out there. And so I want to thank him for that and his years of service, and wish him well in his future endeavor. So I don't know if there was anyone else that would like to comment?
I'm going to wait till the end. I have, I have three to comment on.
Okay. All right, then we will move to Councilmember Klein, who is here in attendance. And the plaque reads, "In heartfelt appreciation to Mike Klein for dedicated public service as a planning commissioner from 2007 to 2011, and a city council member from 2011 to 2020, presented this 23rd day of November 2020, City of Series, Series City Council, together we achieve." So, Mike, there's also a certificate here from Congressman Harder's office as well. I want to thank you, Mike, for your service. I know when you came on this board, you started off in the planning commission, and I know when former Senator Canelo and I started out with you, we said, hey, I know you want to be on the council, but we'd like you to spend some time on the planning commission, because I think it's a valuable experience to learn about the whole planning and rezoning and everything. And I personally kind of liked it when I did it. And so hopefully that time served you well. When you did move on to the council, you've done a great job. You know, you've asked the tough questions, you've dove in, and it's really been a benefit, I believe, to the citizens. So I want to thank you for your years of service, and I'm sure you'll have many great things moving forward, and I'm sure golf will be one of them. So, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Councilmember Klein? If not, then I'll let Councilmember say a few words.
Well, you know, I thank you very much for those, for what you said. You know, it's, it was a learning and growing experience of, you know, being a resident of Series for as long as I have. So, you know, I just want to thank you, and, you know, it, it means a lot to me. So at the end of the meeting, I have, you know, my thanks that I'd like to give out as my last comment, you know, and thank a few people. So, but I thank you.
Thank you. The next presentation is honoring myself, but I don't think I'm the one going to be heading that up. I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor.
"In heartfelt appreciation to Chris Viera for dedicated public service as Planning Commissioner 2001 to 2003, City Council Member 2003 to 2011, Mayor 2011, 2020, presented this 23rd day of November 20 of 20, City of Series, City Council, City of Series, together we achieve." The plaque also has a key to the city, as well as the key to the city that we'll be presenting to you. And I also have a certificate of recognition from Congressman Josh Harder to give you as well. But what I would like to say is that I've appreciated Mayor Viera, Councilmember Klein, and Councilmember DeRocet for all of the years. It's about 38 total years that you've spent serving this community. And I appreciate it as a council member, but I really appreciate it as a citizen that you've taken that time and that interest and dedication for everyone in the city. Thank you both. And Councilmember DeRocet.
You know, Chris, if I may say something, you know, it's been a pleasure serving with you. You know, there's a lot of things that, you know, we go back to the time that, you know, I interviewed you and Anthony Canelo, when they had the vacancy on the city council and one of your things. And, you know, I, you know, your leadership, the way you conduct yourself, the way you let every council member be an individual. And when we're done here on the diocese, we're done. And, you know, that means a lot for the city. So, you know, your leadership and just helping us keep order, you, it has meant a lot. So, thank you very much for what you've done for the City of Series. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to send my well wishes to all the three outgoing members. Thank you for your dedication to our city. Thank you for your stewardship. An honor to serve alongside you, and I wish you and your family absolutely nothing but the best.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank you for this presentation. It's hard to believe it's been 20 years. I kind of joked a little bit the other day when I told somebody, the reason I got into politics was because I said if I was going to live in the community, I wanted to at least try to make a difference. Most of you up here know that my family's been in the City of Series for over 120 years. So I thought if I was going to live here and raise a family, that I wanted to be involved. But I made the stipulation at the time that I didn't want to be a career politician, and I turn around, I look, and I'm the longest standing politician, I believe, in Stanislaus County. So I guess that went out the window a number of years ago. But I did want to thank, you know, a number of people. I wanted to thank former council members and mayors. Gosh, we've, we've been through a lot of Gosh, we've, we've been through a lot of, um, joy and, and even a lot of pain. I remember dealing with Councilmember, uh, Phipps's death. Councilmember Ochoa's who passed after, but, um, but there was, there was, um, a lot of joy and a lot of, um, positive things that we were able to, to accomplish. And the one thing that this board never did, which others around us did, was we never fought. We always had a common goal and an objective of making Series the best place. And we always had that, that mantra that while everybody else around us in other cities were fighting, we wanted to run as fast as we could and accomplish as much as we could. And I think we were pretty successful, uh, in doing that. I would, I just kinda started writing some of the things that, um, we've accomplished over the last twenty years. Not only with the former council members that we had, but this board up here. You know, it starts with this new community center that we have. And then there's the River Bluff Regional Park, the Whitmore Overpass, the new design for the Mitchell Road Interchange, which is in progress. The landscape medians that you see on Hatch and Mitchell Road. Major infrastructure improvements for sewer and water, um, that you don't see, but are critical infrastructure the city needs. You know, the downtown redevelopment project that we undertook. Uh, and then probably, um, two of the most important projects that I'm proud of. One is the upcoming surface water project that, um, should provide our community with safe, reliable drinking water for the next fifty years. I can't stress enough of how important that project is, given, um, the challenges that, uh, await the Central Valley with the water situation. So, um, that one is a port, an important one to me. And then I'm excited about, uh, ultimately the Ace Train Station that Senator Canelo was able to get funding for prior to his departure from the Senate. So, um, lots been accomplished. I would, um, like to just finish up here and say again, thank you to all the previous city council staff. And the city managers and the city staff that we've worked with. Uh, we've had great people, uh, over the number of years. And I would employ, um, the future council and the one council, uh, member, Vice Mayor Rhino, that is staying to always keep a vision on the big picture for the city and taking us to that next level to be the best city that we can. So again, uh, thank you all for the, the recognition. You know, I, I appreciate it a great deal. So. With that, um, I don't think there's anyone else that wants to speak, so I will, uh, move on. What's that? Oh. Okay, so.
It's an honor for me to be here tonight representing Assemblymember Adam Gray. As a member of this community, as a former member of this council, it's even more important for me to be able to be here to represent this community that has done so much in the big picture of San Slos County, as well as the twenty-first Assembly District. And as a quick side note, thank you Supervisor Dean Martini for your continued service and your dedication. Nobody goes to more meetings than you. That's a fact. Uh, on behalf of Assemblymember Adam Gray, I want to recognize the work of Councilmembers Drossit and Klein and their dedicated service to this community, which doesn't end with their time on the council. They were dedicated community servants before they served up here, and they'll continue to be dedicated community servants afterwards. To Mayor Viera, thank you for your committed service. On behalf of the California State Assembly, Assemblymember Gray, you have put in a lot of long ti- hours, time and community effort, as each of your council members have in your time of service. And, um, it's very much appreciated. So on behalf of the California State Assembly, thank you for your dedicated work and, um, everything you've done. And I hope you enjoy having your Monday nights back.
Thank you.
I have a certificate. It's two for all the three of you. I know Brett's not here tonight. Each one of you, you know, I've, I've had a good relationship with. I think that the city and the county, I think, has always gotten along pretty well here. I don't think we've sued each other anymore. We had a few problems with Patterson, but the Series now. And, you know, you've had good leadership here. And I know the mayor, you were, you know, at the head of it for a while. But, yeah, you had listed a lot of the things that had happened here. And I was thinking of that, um, earlier today. I can remember the overpass project there and the downtown redevelopment. You've got a really nice downtown now. And that was just something Series really needed. And, uh, you got that fixed up good. You got the new Walmart. A center going in finally after years of lawsuits. And you kept at it and you're finally gonna get it. Um, but Series has, you know, it improved, uh, a lot through the years. It's been steady improvement. I can remember going to your council meetings when you're across the street, you know, in the other building. And then, you know, this building was built and you got it built just before the economy kinda collapsed. So if you hadn't have done it when you did, I don't think it would ever got done. Um, but you've made a lot of great strides forward from new fire stations to city halls, the overpass, downtown redevelopment. And really the, um, the thing I, I gotta agree with you is the, uh, water surface, treat water surface, uh, plant. Coming in, that is something that's really been needed here. Uh, water treatment plant, really is what I'm trying to say. Now, that will not just solve your water quality problems for fifty years. It will be forever. It's the water that comes down the Twalome River is snow water and it is just as pure as can be. It's just excellent water. And you mix that with, uh, the well water, you're gonna have, um, a system just as good as Modesto's. It will be good forever. Might be a little expensive, but in the long run, that's, that's the thing to do. So, and all of you, I wish you well. You know, Mike, I've always gotten along well with you and wish you well and whatever you do next. And sorry Brett isn't here tonight, but I have a certificate for each of you. I don't know how you wanna get these out, or I can give them to your, your staff here to give them to you.
You can, you can just give them to us after, or give them to the city clerk and then we can get them. Unless you want to read them, it's up to you.
No, they're, they're quite simple there. They, we, they don't have the money that the state does for. And that's our, our certificates are quite, quite simple. It's signed by all the members of the board. We only have, you know, four members right now. We're getting the fifth one here next week. But it's just a little token of appreciation of all the work that you did, all the meetings you went to, the staff reports you read. And the, the fiscal management that you've done and moving Series really to the next level. I've seen it through the twenty years and every year something got done better than the year before. Appreciate all your efforts on that and really good job.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Okay. With that, we will move on to citizens' communication to councils not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand. It's the little icon, I believe, on the left-hand side, or excuse me, right-hand side to speak. If you are participating via telephone, please press nine on your phone. The city clerk will call your name in the order the requests are received. When it's your time to speak, the city clerk will unmute your microphone. The city clerk will please provide the name of each person that has requested to speak. And then after the Zoom comments, I will ask to see if there have been any public comments through email. Uh, and then we will close the public comment period. So at this time, um. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please hit the raise your hand icon. I see there's one individual, Lee Brandt.
Lee Brandt, I'll unmute your mic. Your mic should be unmuted.
Good evening, council. I would just like to say to those moving on, the best of luck. And thank you for your service. And to the one who's staying, the best of luck. And that's all I really have to say. Happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Lee. Is there anyone else? Okay, Katie Ferdinand, Ferdinand.
Katie, your mic should be unmuted.
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to my dad for, um, being the mayor of Series for quite some time now. We are so, so proud of everything that you have accomplished over the years. And, uh, we look forward to seeing what else, uh, new mayor can, can do for our city. So thank you for all you've done, Dad. We love you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like to have a consent counter item pulled for further discussion? All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to have a consent calendar item pulled for the discussion? If so, please raise your hand on the hand icon. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Move to adopt one, two, three, A, four, five, A, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. We have one public hearing item, item number thirteen, resolution number twenty twenty dash one twenty-three. Public hearing to consider necessary adjustments to this fees for the solid waste service. Determination of protests and approve a resolution adopting changes to the solid waste fee rate structure effective January first, twenty twenty-one. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor. So in recent years past, solid waste diversion, recycling and organics regulations have changed. After additional reviews into each of the programs, at this time, the federal and state governments are not offering any additional funding to help out any of these programs. I believe Councilmember Condit asked a couple of times if we could look into that. And, um, Cal Recycle just isn't offering any funding mechanisms right now. Uh, the cities currently rely solely on customer revenues to provide these services. Should this rate increase not pass, the additional costs would have to come from the general fund if these programs are mandated from the state. And Cal Recycle can enforce the fines. So a quick overview says some of the reasonings. So Assembly Bill nine thirty-nine. To California Integrated Waste Management, which requires cities, counties and regional solid waste management agencies responsible for enacting plans to implement programs to divert fifty percent of the waste each year. And our current diversion rate right now is fifteen percent. Assembly Bill three forty-one, mandatory commercial recycling requires businesses, including public entities, that generate four cubic yards or more of solid waste each week to arrange each week, I'm sorry. Each week.
Bringing tears to your eyes?
Four cubic yards or more of solid waste each week to arrange for recycling services. Businesses can self-haul, subscribe to a hauler or arrange for pickup of the materials. All this work has to be documented and reported to the city, verified and reported to Cal Recycle for compliance. Assembly Bill eighteen twenty-six is mandatory organics recycling. Requires businesses that generate four cubic yards or more of solid waste per week to arrange for organic recycling services. Organic waste is food waste, green yard waste, landscape and pruning waste, non-hazardous food waste, food soiled paper waste. Assembly Bill thirteen eighty-three requires agencies to reduce organic waste disposal by seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-five. Equivalent to twenty million tons annually in the state of California. It also requires the state to increase edible food recovery by twenty percent by twenty twenty-five. Assembly Bill eight two seven adds language to Assembly Bills three forty-one and eighteen twenty-six requiring businesses to provide organics and recycling containers for customers to collect waste generated from products purchased and consumed on premises. This is all of the, um, restaurants. So at the city council meeting on September twenty-eighth, council declared its intent to schedule a public hearing to, to consider the necessary adjustments to the fees and directed staff to mail out the notices. On October first, staff mailed out thirteen thousand notices to all properties affected by the proposed rates. And tonight's public hearing meets the forty-five day requirement for noticing. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, does anyone on the council have any questions from staff on this item? Okay, at this time, we'll open the protest hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? As a reminder, if you wish to protest, you must submit a written protest to the city clerk prior to the closing of the, uh, protest hearing. So at this time, do we open it up? So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, uh, on this or protest, please raise your hand on the hand icon. Okay, I see one. It looks like Robert.
Bert, your mic should be unmuted.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good deal. Good evening, uh, council members, mayor. Um, I've been reading through all this. And it, um, I, I got a few questions. How wise is it right now to hit our general population with roughly one hundred dollars increase while we go through a pandemic? We have people that not, uh, attend this Zoom meeting. They're on elderly or they don't have ability. And not only that, um, so they've lost, they don't have their, they don't have a voice. And a lot of those people are on fixed incomes. Um, so is there any way, I mean, I, I, I received an email from, uh. I, I forget the gentleman's name and I've, I've inquired a lot. I've done a lot of research on this. And, uh, it, it seems that the time on this, uh, and, and if, if it's my understanding, the state is pushing this down our throats. Um, and so if that's the case, uh, can we push back on the state a little bit? And can we get a little bit of grace maybe for, uh, our start date instead of January, maybe July? I, I, I picked up on the, it, when he was explaining this bill and he talked about the restaurants. Uh, so we're gonna add more strain to our small businesses that are already struggling. It just seems like it's, it, it, the timing is horrible and there should be a better way we could do that. Maybe, I, and I, I don't know what our general fund is, but maybe they, that can help. Or maybe the state can step back a little bit and, 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 uh, give a, a little more window of opportunity for people that, uh, to, to try to financially deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, a couple of comments I wanted to address there. I think you indicated a hundred dollar rate increase. That's not great. It's, Jeremy, what are we looking at? Five dollars? Five dollar a month?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so, so the increase is not a hundred. It, it's five dollars. You are correct. Um, these are requirements that are being, um, pushed down by the state as a requirement. We have exhausted all avenues to see if there was additional revenue or some other things that we might be able to do. To offset this. Unfortunately, there aren't any. And as you can imagine, uh, implementing a three-tier garbage can system where we only have two. Does increase the cost because of the separation. If we do not do this, then we are subject to fine by the state. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we would lose funding from the state.
Correct, and they have a lot of, they have a lot of other avenues that they can go down as well, like SRF funding and a few other options.
Good. And then I think the last point you asked about was the general fund, and unfortunately, no, there's, there's nothing there, and if there was more money in the general fund, we'd probably look to hire more police and fire staff with that. There just isn't that money there. So, as much as we all hate this, and I couldn't agree with you more, this really is a discussion that needs to be had with legislators in Sacramento, because we're not the one implementing this, or excuse me, we're not the one pushing this, we're just implementing it. Councilmember Condit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jeremy, for looking into that. My questions in regards to the last meeting, this was brought up. I really appreciate staff's time and trying to see if there was any wiggle room or any fees or rates that we could potentially lower. You know, just a further comment on that, I do believe any level of government, whether it's federal, state, county, or local city government, they should look at those options, and if there's ever an option in the future, maybe the future council can consider that option as well. But, Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right, this is an unfunded mandate. This is something that is being pushed on us and forced upon us by the state of California, and frankly, if the state would like to implement these programs, they should come up with a better way to pay for, or at least assist our cities in a better way. So, thank you.
Mr. Brad?
Yeah, hi. I'm not sure if this is the place to ask, but I wanted to ask about the leaf and limb pickup, and are you going to reconsider putting the three cans behind fencing? I don't know if this is where I ask, I mean, and I understand, you know, that the state mandates the increase, and there's not a lot we can do about it as citizens or as cities. But I was just wondering about the leaf and limb, and I don't know if I missed that or, or what, the leaf and limb and the, the three cans, because if you go down Acorn right today, you're going to see piles and piles and piles of leaves and branches. So, I don't know if that's ever been addressed, or is that something that needs to be addressed when the new council comes in in January? Thank you.
That's a good question. Jeremy, are we going to be able to keep with an aggressive leaf and limb program that still would be somewhat year-round?
So, right now in the rates, it's the, it's, it's set up for the last quarter of the year, October, November, December. That's 40% of the, traditionally, that's 40% of the leaf and limb that's put out on the streets is in those last three months. So, we extended it from October 1st through January 9th to go through Christmas tree for pickup of the Christmas trees as well. Can we extend it year-round? We can work on some negotiations with Bertolati.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see that, because I would hate for people to just put it out and just sit there and sit there and sit there. I know in my conversations with former council member and former CEO of the county, Mr. Dan Ryzen, when he was on the council, they worked very hard to get the year-round leaf and limb program, because they both believed it was part of, you know, I don't want to call it code enforcement, but a beautification of the city by making sure that those things were picked up. So, when, when he brought it to my attention, to, and to the other council members' attention, I, I think it would be good if we can try to, you know, squeeze in there that we still offer the leaf and limb program, you know, throughout the years. So, if you're telling me there's a little bit of wiggle, I'm like, I think that, that's a good thing, so.
We'll work on it with Bertolati.
Okay. So, you're on record now, so I got you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Like to speak, please raise your hand.
Mayor, hang on.
Yes.
So, to answer, Lee, to answer your second question, is the three-can system, it's part of the municipal code. So, after the rates are adopted and everything is approved, if everything gets approved, sometime in January, I plan on bringing back the ordinance update for the municipal code as well as Bertolati's agreement, and that'll get discussed at that time.
When will the new cans roll out?
October-ish.
Okay.
Is what we're looking for. So, right now, the rates are being put in place to purchase, to start purchasing the cans as well as financing for the trucks. October, November, right in there is when we'll start putting cans out. We have a, we have a large number of cans that are already green that are out there. We need to supply the black can and vice-versus. We need to go through and do an audit and identify those.
So, if this goes through, then the black can would then become solid waste, the green would become lawn leaf, you know, organics, I guess?
Correct.
And, okay, and then the blue would stay as the recycling?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want me to open that?
Oh, and when I, I was leading into what you just said, Mayor, because when will the educational part be out to let everybody know which can is to be used for what, and what kind of tolerance level is there going to be for the adjustments of people to get used to it? I know we've had green cans for as long as I can remember, and we put all of our regular solid waste in there, and the blue is recyclable. So, we're going to have to really educate the citizens, we're going to have to give them some kind of latitude to be up to the, to the, the changes of what can go where.
So, right now, we have three flyers that have been created, and I believe I gave you one of the flyers. It kind of lays out the program, and the, the original thought is sometime around April to May, we'll start that education outreach. I didn't want to get too far in front of it, because we're still doing leaf and limb, which at, before this conversation, we weren't going to do year-round leaf and limb. It was going to be towards the end of the year, so the cans themselves aren't going to start rolling out, and I didn't want to confuse residents any more than it's already going to be. And I completely agree with you. I mean, we, we went through this, it was quite painful on the water side, you know, how to, to educate and get to outreach rather than, you know, ruling with an iron fist. It's going to take time, it's going to take a couple of years. This isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Heeb, I see you have your hand raised.
Oh, hello, this is Robert Rainey.
Yeah, actually, Dave, Robert's already spoke. Sorry.
Dave, your mic should be unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting, because a lot of people out there don't separate now, they'll, they'll have three cans, they won't separate, and I find, I find that those, some of them, they, they mow their lawns and they put just a basket of lawn clippings out on the streets. They do a lot, you know, the, the, the last meeting, the one that talked about what they could do for the neighborhoods, I think if everybody got out of their house and cleaned up the trash out of their yards and the streets, we'd be better off. But, it seems like a lot of people don't care what people think of them. And it's, it's amazing, they put limbs and leaves out there, but they also throw garbage in, in the piles, too. So, it's going to be interesting, you try to educate people that don't want to be educated. And, you know, I, it was amazing, Saturday I went to bike ride, and Sunday more, Sunday morning I went for a bike ride. Somebody had changed the carpeting in their house, and instead of dumping in somebody's field in one pile, they just stopped in the middle road, put a few pieces out, drove down the street, pulled a few more pieces out, and dumped several piles. So, they, they, you know, give the reward to everybody, you know, but it'll be interesting to see how this works out with three cans.
Okay. Alright, seeing no one else wanting to speak, we will close the public hearing. City clerk, have you calculated the number of the protests received both prior to and during this public hearing, and the number of protests necessary to constitute a majority protest of the proposed solid waste fee rate structure?
Yes, Mayor, but if I may, I did receive a written comment.
Okay.
So, let me read that before I read the results. This is from Sherry Stoll. She said, "I would prefer the cost of the garbage cans to not be so expensive. The landfill garbage can would not be used enough by my family to be worth having it. It's unnecessary. Also, the rate of increase for the garbage cans is too much for the first year."
Thank you.
And now I will read the protest ballots. The total number valid, valid protest, protest received against the proposed solid, solid waste fee rate structure is 38. The total number of customers affected by the new solid waste fee service structure is 13,003. The total number of protests required for a majority protest is 6,502. The protests, protests received do not constitute a majority protest of the proposed solid waste fee service structure.
Okay. Since a majority protest has not been filed for the proposed waste, solid waste fee rate structure, the council may proceed to take action on the resolution listed on the agenda. Does the council have any comments, or any further comments or discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion. Move to adopt resolution 2020 123.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember Rossett is absent. Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. We have no new business, so we'll move to the discussion items. We have one item left. It's the Provide Direction to City Staff Regarding Establishing Contribution Limits for Candidates for City Office. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Last year, the governor signed a bill, AB 571, relating to contribution limits for a city council and city clerk and city treasurer. The bill gives the city two options. Well, first of all, there's two aspects to campaign contributions. They're setting the limit, then there's enforcing violations of the limit. So, the bill gives you two options. You can fall back to the state's limit, which is currently $4,700, and will be increasing periodically over time, and have the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission of the State, enforce any violations. The second option is to create your own limits and to create your own enforcement mechanism, if you choose. So, it's really, that's it in a nutshell. Which option would you like to do, fall back to the state or create your own?
And currently, we, we're using the states, is that correct?
Yes.
And when you say the limit's $4,700, that's per, per individual contribution?
Yes, it is.
Okay. My recommendation would be, A, that we stick with the state's requirements, but B, and more importantly, and I hate to do this, but, you know, punt this to the next city council to make the official designation, because those are going to be the individuals that...
Actually, we need, we need to make it at the end, by the end of the year.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then my recommendation would be that we keep it at the state limits, and then if they choose to re-address this after the year and adjust it, they can do so.
A city can always change your mind and do it themselves, yes.
I agree with the mayor.
I do, too.
Okay, so at this point, do you need a motion on this, or is this?
Yeah, just for the record, direct us which...
Are you good with that?
Yes.
So, it looks like the council is unanimous with that direction.
Yeah, well, that will suffice.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Referrals, is there any, well, there's one council member left. Is there anything you would like to place on a future agenda?
No.
Okay. We will move to Reports. Again, I just want to thank everybody who's served with me, who's also been here with the city over the last 20 years. I've enjoyed my time, and I look forward to watching you all from the chief seats now and being able to criticize as you move forward. So, again, thank you. Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, you know, Mayor, thank you. You know, I, I save this till the end, you know, I just want to say, you know, the first person I want to thank is my wife for the changes that she's made with me, being an elected official, rescheduling vacations, the meetings I went to, the days reading the agenda for each, listening to me when I felt there was something wrong and I had no way of fixing it, just campaigning and overall believing in me. I want to thank the citizens of Series for electing me to two terms as your city council member. I might not have voted as you saw fit, and I probably can name at least two times that it was most likely that way. I'd like to thank Art de Work, our past Public Safety Director, City Manager, for the help, to help me through my first few years and rely, and really letting me see how government works and letting the doors be open to talk to anybody that works for the city and not having to brief him. Toby Wells, for our bi-monthly meetings and the time that we got to disagree and not make it a public topic. Tom Westbrook, for the new and fresh approach and the willingness to be open and to try to come to an understanding. I want to thank you for what you bring to the city. To Diane, our city clerk, you know, you are the backbone of the city council. Without you, we would not have the readiness to be able to prepare and the timing that you do, the extra effort you go to help the city council out with questions, with insights, with direction. You're the go-to person, and without you, you know, the city manager couldn't even do his job. You're fantastic. I wish you all the luck, all the best, and I want to thank you for the short time that I've got to be a council member and work with you. To Chief Collins and Chief Weiss, you know how much I appreciate both of you, and you know how much I support you. You have meant a lot to me. Chief Collins, I've known you since you were like junior high, and to watch you grow within the department and the understanding and what you bring to the city, your hometown. It's fantastic. Chief Weiss is not here. You know, I lobbied for a, a fire chief for a long time, and I think we, we got something fantastic, and, and our two chiefs do an excellent job working together. Captain Crane, you know, you come to every city council meeting, you're there, you, you're there, you answer my questions. I think you bring a lot, lot to this department. You've been a mainstay here, and I want to thank you for what you bring to the city. To Jeremy, you know, when we first started here and I was on a city council, you got the blunt of a lot of my questions and a lot of my lack of understanding on certain aspects of the city. You know firsthand that I do read the agenda, that I do ask questions of things that I don't understand, and you've put up with a whole lot. I mean, it got to the point where I would ask you questions at 5:30 in the morning so you can have your weekend. I'd rather wake you up than disturb your days off. So, I want to thank you very much for what you have done for me and the meetings that you've allowed me to attend and get a better understanding. You know, last I want to say is, you know, I debated on what I was going to do here, but I'm going to say it. You know, back on November 2nd, November 12th of 2019, we did a comprehensive update of our city ordinances, and on November 12th, 2019, one of the city ordinances that we did was Title II, and in Title II, there's Chapter 15, and that is the compensation benefits for the city council members and the mayor. What I want to point out is, at that time, we got to discuss ordinances, benefits, everything that went on in this city. I want to point out that Councilmember Condit and is Cooper Condit campaigned on council compensation and benefits. But, Title II, Chapter 15, Linda Rhino made a motion to accept those benefits, and the second to accept those benefits was Chance Condit. Chance Condit seconded the motion for our benefits and our compensation package. So, I just want that to be known, that it's out there, and he agreed to it all. So, with that being said, this is my last council meeting, I want to thank everybody for what they, what they've done for me, for what I've allowed, allowed to do, and I will bow out gracefully, just like Guillermo Ochoa bowed out gracefully when I beat Guillermo Ochoa. I respected the man, me and him had a few con- Me and him had a few conversations afterwards and during it, and overall, Guillermo Ochoa was a fantastic individual. So with that, I want to say thank you and good night.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
I would like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Mayor Condit?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. All right, Tom, anything? Okay. Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. Wanted to let the council know that Christmas Tree Lane is going to have a little bit different feel this year. COVID-19 obviously is having an impact, so we are not going to be able to regrettably have the parade or the festival that we had traditionally in years past. We talked with Councilman Condit, Councilman Condit lives on Christmas Tree Lane, about kind of that different feel. So the street will be open on opening night, December 5th. It won't be blocked off, cars will be able to drive through and kind of look at the Christmas lights just like they have. There will also be the trash cans and kind of social distancing signs in there, but Christmas Tree Lane will have a little bit different feel this year. Also wanted to mention that City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, so everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Also, kind of knowing that we're in this, kind of trying to limit the number of attendance to meetings, I think what I would propose is, future council meetings when we're here together, is limiting the number of staff that are here. So if they have an item that's on the agenda, certainly want them to be here so they can answer any questions, but perhaps if they don't have an agenda item, they would just zoom in rather than coming into the meeting itself. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank Councilman Dorosit and Councilman Klein. You know, as a staff member who's approaching two decades with the city of Series, it's kind of rare to have kind of a continuity. And Councilman Dorosit and then Councilman Klein, first on the Planning Commission on the city council, we got to work a lot together. I got to answer a lot of questions and have a lot of discussions and see you in personal settings, at concerts in the parks, or if there was something through the Lions Club. So I do appreciate the support that both Councilman Dorosit and Klein had given me over the years, very valued. And then Mayor Viera, you know, as I mentioned, almost two decades I've worked with the city of Series. I'll probably not run into another elected official and have this type of continuity, first at the Planning Commission, then as a council member, and then the mayor. We know each other very well, and I wish you and Mike and Brett all the best in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz?
Just wanted to thank Mayor Viera, Councilmember Klein, and Councilmember Dorosit for your years of service, taking time away from your families to serve the citizens, and I just want you to enjoy your time off.
Thank you. Chief Collins?
You, sir, I want to say thank you for your many years of leadership and everything you've done in the community, your constant support of public safety, both police and fire, and your support and opportunity for my professional growth. Councilmember Klein, the same goes to you. Thank you for your years of leadership and everything you've done for this city, and your close support for me and my career. I won't forget that. So thank you, and I wish the both of you a happy Chapter Two, whatever that might be.
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
Keeping this short and simple, just to thank you for your service, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Jeremy? Supervisor White, I mean, excuse me, Chief Weiss on the phone, or on Zoom?
Good evening, council. I'd like to reiterate sentiments from Chief Collins, Captain Crane, and thank you for your service to the community. I'd also like to thank Councilman Klein for our many conversations and his history lessons for me as I came over about the Series Fire Department. He always provided a lot of insight on the history of the department, and I appreciate what you've done. Having myself served on a board for almost 10 years now, I know the thankless hours and the time you spend dedicated to the city, and appreciate it. And I wish you well in your next endeavors. Thank you.
You. Matt?
Outgoing counsel for all the support for Parks and Recreation. I know the last decade was challenging to overcome, and the time it took and the energy and to get the city in financial shape and to move forward. Thank you for your time. I know when I met with City Manager Wells, I applied for this job, he showed kind of the continuity of the council to get through that and to move forward. So thank you for your time and effort and support, being on the, I think, 20 years the mayor is, and some of the projects that you've moved forward, the water plant and stuff, they're going to be here for decades, so thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor DiMartini?
I have nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, Daniel Padilla is also on Zoom.
Okay. Daniel?
Can you guys, well?
We can hear you.
Well, I think most of my colleagues, you know, have covered all of the bases. I'd also like to thank the three of you for your service, decades of service, and I'm born and raised in Series, and I really appreciate all you guys have done for the city of Series and including the surface water treatment plant. That's a fantastic project that will be a legacy project for the three of you. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Have I missed anyone else? I don't think so. All right, with that, we will adjourn to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which will be held on December 14th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Again, everyone have a very, very nice Thanksgiving. Stay health and safety, stay healthy and safe through the holiday season. Again, boy, my last meeting, and I can barely get the words out. So thank you very much, and good evening.